That's a very nice, it was nice, it was nice. It's certainly a show.
Just a special meeting.
You hear from? Yeah, what you're waiting on for, which part, area?
Oh, cool.
Sir, what's happening?
Want to say that?
Good, good. We missed you at the groundbreaking.
There'll be the next one.
It was nice.
There'll be something next, we should, was that tomorrow, that was Monday, or please?
No, the one, it was today, actually. Really? Oh. It was, uh, down over at the street.
Calling to order, uh, calling to order the special meeting of the city council. Clerk will read the roll.
Council Capone?
Here.
Council De La Sola? Council De Florio? Council De Perro?
Here.
Council Hanlon?
Here.
Council Marquesi?
Here.
Council Matuski? Council McKinnon?
Here.
Council McGlaughlin? Council Simonelli?
Yeah.
And President Napolitano?
Here.
Nine members present, you do have a quorum, uh, Council McGlaughlin just came in, ten members present, you do have a quorum?
Hey, we have a quorum, you'll rise to salute the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we get started, I'd like, I received a communication from Councilman Del Sol. As most people know, Councilman Del Sol works in the electrical industry, uh, he is working on a project up in the north Andover, of the Andover area, following this weekend's events up there. He has no way to be able to get here this evening, so he does offer his regrets. Okay? Having said that, clerk will read the first item on the agenda.
Item number one, Mr. President, is an order from President Napolitano, uh, Council Hanlon, De Perro, McGlaughlin, De La Sola, amended zoning ordinances?
Amended zoning ordinances, temporary parking facilities.
Okay. Council McGlaughlin.
Mr. President, thank you, on the motion, I, uh, I had a couple of questions, and I actually just recently got them answered with the, with the mayor, it's, uh, I was concerned that this would be, uh, something that would be citywide, and we'd be opening our city up potentially to a problem with, um, a citywide. This is, uh, just for the lower Broadway corridor, uh, so it isolates just one section of the city that this could potentially happening, and by the fact that it's done by special permit of the planning board, and we know how difficult it can be sometimes to, uh, get things passed through the planning board because they're thorough with their job, and they do a, a good thorough job. I would, uh, my concerns are much more at ease tonight, knowing that the planning board, who really crosses their t's and dots their i's, would be giving out special permits for this. I would ask that my colleagues would look favorably upon this, because I know how detrimental it could be if this didn't pass for the opening of the casino, we saw what happened in Springfield recently, and other developments that have opened with massive influxation of individuals. So this would be something that, I applaud the Encore group for, they're looking ahead, they're trying to put measurements in place now, to not have those types of problems happening when the day that they open, within a year from now. So I just wanted to pass along those sentiments, uh, to my colleagues, and ask for their consideration.
Your motion, your missioning for favorable action? Oh, man, it is actually, okay, it's been seconded. Council Matuski.
Thank you, Mr. President, uh, Mr. Taco, I want to thank you for being here this evening, I am in favor of this temporary permit. However, at the last council meeting, uh, with the exception of one member that was absent, and one member that wasn't in the chamber, we passed a resolution asking Encore to reconsider their position on either a tunnel for pedestrians, or an overhead walkway for pedestrian safety, and for traffic flow issues.
Councilman?
Yeah.
All due respect, um, it's not the piece of business in front of us, um, though I, I understand your concerns, but it, uh, because Mr. Taco was not in front of us, I'd ask that you not discuss that portion, and please stay on the point of the, of the motion.
The issue here is, Mr. President, I wanted him to be aware of that, because I will vote for this tonight, with the understanding that he understands that the city council would like some kind of a crossover from this parking area. And that's what we talked about at the meeting, that was part of that discussion, so, I don't know how it got dropped. But, uh, I'd like to see the, the area landscaped, and I know you people do the, a great job on landscaping with mature trees and so forth, but, uh, I hope you'll seriously consider, did you get a copy of that resolution, by the way? Your people, okay, so you're aware of our position here?
Again, I, I want to remind you, the gentleman is not before us, so please do not ask questions through the chamber, and if you'd like to have him come up, please make the motion.
I'd like to have, have a motion to invite Mr. Taco from Encore to be.
Have a motion to have Mr. Taco come before us, been seconded, all in favor? Opposed? I have it.
I'll, I'll finish up by, uh, I wasn't aware that he wasn't invited up, actually, so.
Goodness, Chairman, if I can answer that, uh, I think that the, uh, Taco, that he's talking about, he's talking about a parking lot, how would you tell, maybe have a decent spot when you get across the street, I think that's, that means to be a couple, so that's what I think he's gonna do.
No, I, I understand that, but, um, I remind the members that there was, that was a separate piece from this piece, and because it's a separate piece, that's already being addressed, um, again, the motion right now is for favorable action on the parking. Okay? So because it, the, the motion is on the parking, that's where the talk, that's where the discussion needs to be on, is on the.
I still have the floor, Mr. President.
I haven't relinquished the floor, you, and I'm not penalizing you either, I'm just clarifying to Councilman Hanlon.
Well, there seems to be some disagreement with your, uh, opinion on this matter. So, you know, uh, this is a serious issue, uh, related to the parking area, and one of the reasons why I'm going to vote in front, uh, for this parking area is because I believe that the Encore people will ultimately make the right decision and understand.
Feel free to ask your questions, he's right here.
Okay. Well, I, I want you to, I don't want you cutting me off.
Well, I, I want you to stay, remember, you're, you're speaking on the motion, and the motion is for favorable action on the parking, for that reason, you need to keep the comments relevant to the ordinance changes. The ordinance change itself has nothing to do with a carryover bridge, though I share your sentiments, that's why I need you to stay focused on.
Uh, Mr. Taco, I'll be voting for this tonight, and the reason is that I think you, uh, you, the Encore group is very reasonable, and I believe that they will put this pedestrian crosswalk in. I believe you'll reconsider your position on that, it's imperative that people be able to crossover without stopping traffic, and without, uh, pedestrian safety, uh, being in question, so, I'll vote for this tonight. Otherwise, we're just gonna have nothing there. Parking lot, uh, it's just gonna be an open air nothing. This is where your construction workers park now?
Yes, sir, it is.
And it holds eight hundred cars?
Uh, I believe, um, more than that, today.
More than that, it looks much bigger, but, well, I want to thank you for appearing, and congratulations on your groundbreaking today for our new stadium at the.
Thank you, sir, thank you for coming down, and.
It was my pleasure, it was nice to see, uh, Mr. Maddox there today, too.
It is, it's great to have our new CEO in town, so.
Very good, thank you for being here tonight, thank you.
Councilman Hanlon.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I don't think I have any questions, I just want to get something clarified, uh, this is, and I'm gonna ask you, this is for twenty-eight hundred cars, is that what I understand?
Eight hundred.
Eight hundred cars?
Mr. Taco, if you can answer that.
Eight hundred, twenty-eight hundred.
Yes, eight hun, eight hundred cars.
Eight hu, okay, eight hundred, okay, and it's for three years, starting when?
So, uh.
Ms. Taco can answer those questions.
So, I, I think, to clarify, the item on the agenda tonight is for a, a zoning amendment that isn't specific to the number of vehicles. We'll, we'll then, if this were to pass favorably, um, we would then apply with the city for a special permit to the planning board, where we would discuss the full details of the plan, which includes pedestrian crossings, includes, um, the number of cars, it will detail the lots, it will detail the snow removal, um, water management, drainage, and, and all those specifics, that's part of a site plan review, um, that we, we happily would undertake, um, in partnership with the city. Uh, it, one of the other pieces is that we, we still need to work out the MOU with the city, as we've discussed, there's a, it's really going to be a municipally, um, municipal-operated, uh, parking garage, community parking facility, so a lot of those details we need to work out with, with the city of Everett.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Councilman De Florio.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, you know, I give this a lot of thought, and I, we asked the questions when it came up, the point is, if we don't vote for this tonight, there's gonna be eight hundred cars all over the city of Everett. The people that live down there will have no more driveway, there're gonna be cars everywhere, so, we have to trust that the Encore is gonna do the right thing, and as far as I know, each parking space will be, the money is gonna be making, the, the city is gonna be making the money on the parking space, is that correct? Every parking space is, is gonna be back.
That is correct, we're working on an MOU, uh, with the city and the mayor's office, that would describe, um, what that whole relationship is, I don't think that the talks are there yet, in terms of, I could share all the details, but yes, that's the spirit of what we've been discussing.
Okay, so the bottom line is, this is, to me, it's a no-brainer, for now, you know what I'm saying? And then, it's only a three-year contract, is that correct? It's for three years?
The, the ordinance would only allow up to thirty-six months maximum.
Maximum.
Um, and in our agreement with the city to operate the property, we've already discussed, um, we would like to include a termination at will, uh, in the, um, hope that if we were able to get far enough ahead on permitting and development of the next phase, we could start construction ahead of time, so we could potentially break the lease. At the same token, um, a municipal-run parking lot, if things, um, were not what was anticipated, I could imagine the city could just stop operating a parking facility, so, um, I think there's a number of safeguards in place to, uh, to make this, uh, you know, I think a success, I think our landscaping plan is gonna do a lot, I think, what you're starting to see now on the Encore Boston Harbor side of the road, is the beautification of Broadway, those, we have about two-hundred-and-fifty trees in now, we need to plant about five-hundred more, and what I'm told is, most of those are all along Broadway. So, what you're gonna see is a lot of that i- in, in the plans for, you know, cleaning up the neighborhood, the Boulevard feel, it's continuing that feel all, all up and down there, so I think, um, you know, if, if we were, if we're, you know, and I, I ask your support, if we were able to take this to the planning board for consideration, uh, landscaping plan and beautification would be a big part of that discussion.
Okay, so I really don't have any further questions, I think I've had all the questions answered between the last meeting and tonight, and, you know, nobody likes to see a big parking lot, but, we don't want to see people in our driveways either, okay? Eight hundred cars, just imagine how far up on Main Street they'd be coming up. So, all over the place, Broadway, Main Street, so.
Imagining Cottage Street, but that's just, you know.
Yeah, yeah, there's so, so, all right, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, Council McKinnon.
Who are you, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Taco? Mr. Taco, so we've talked about beautification, we've talked about MOUs, um, and also now, we've also talked about the overpass, uh, this piece that's on tonight is the temporary parking facility that's going to house eight hundred cars, correct?
Uh, I'm sorry, the, the piece that's on the agenda tonight is for.
Temporary parking facility?
A zoning, a temporary parking zoning change, which wouldn't be specific to any specific property across the street, but it would allow developers such as ourselves to apply for special permit to the planning board.
So, once that special permitting came into effect, the u, the, the usage most likely will be for approximately eight hundred cars across the street?
Um, so, y, you know, what I, what we would like to do is, is submit a thoughtful plan, uh, to the planning board, which has, I believe, about eight-hundred-and-fifty, or under that, it's about eight hundred, eight-hundred-and-fifty cars, I don't know the exact number, that's part of the.
Whatever that number may be.
The full plans, but yes.
Okay, so that, that's part of the plan, so there will be.
Which is less than the cars that are parking there now, and I'd also like to point out that in the process of acquiring property across the street, um, we've raised many of the buildings, we've been parking construction workers there, we've actually reduced a lot of the general traffic that was generated in the area, uh, because of those building, those businesses, um, have all now relocated to either different parts of the city, or maybe do adjacent cities.
Now, with, with that in mind, the eight hundred cars that would be parked across the street, if in fact we would have to put in a overpass, would, uh, your company be susceptible to that, or would they be, you know, feasible with that, in talks with the, uh, city?
So, uh, that was actually our company's idea, um, I'm not sure the feasibility of that being done, um, before the completion of the thirty-six-month temporary parking term, but it's absolutely, um, been part, we've had renderings that, um, I think we've shared with the planning board, to show that we've actually put some serious thought in. There's a, a few concerns, specifically actually on the city side, and you may want to talk to Jay Monte, um, and, and we've had great conversations with him, sort of our initial design was more covered and protected, and Jay, um, has said that the city spent a lot of time, and I don't want to put words in his mouth, I encourage you to take a.
Sure.
Talk to the, the, um, transportation team.
What was his concern?
His, he, he, and the city has put a lot of thought into how to make Lower Broadway a more pedestrian-friendly destination in general, so they don't want to discourage part of the Boulevard feel, and the crossings, and the pedestrian crossings, and all this was designed in, with the point that they wanted to encourage pedestrian crossings back and forth, and make it a better area than it is now. So, one of the city's reservations initially was, we don't want to keep people just in your resort, going to another building, potentially across the street, want to encourage people and families to walk up and down the twelve-foot sidewalks, and all the wonderful amenities that are gonna be put in on both sides, so I think there's, these are all great ideas, um, and we're certainly, um, very interested in, in a pedestrian crossing over Broadway, um, at the appropriate time, as we, and we've been furthering those plans, as we, we need to start planning for the future development of what's gonna happen across the street, but that's, there's still some steps we need to take with the city, just to make sure everyone's on the same page, and we're accomplishing all the goals, the goals from the council, the goals from the Lower Broadway master plan, um, our, our goals, and, and obviously with the safety of pedestrians, and, and customers, and residents, and.
You, you, obviously, you could see where the, uh, concern would lie, if you have eight hundred and, or so cars on the opposite side of the street, and there is no pedestrian walk through, or walk way over, to get to the facility, um, that would pose an issue, I would think, down that end of the area, for a public safety standpoint, reason being is, these people just pass across the street to major artery, and they'll either be stopping traffic flow, or they'll be getting hit by the cars that are going in and out of there, or whatever may be happening, and I think that's just feasible to ask for something like that.
Sure, so, there's, you know, in the Broadway designs already, we have, uh, a robust crosswalk system, it's very well-controlled, because if you're outside of the crosswalks, you're likely running into a barrier with a landscape Boulevard, so, to reduce the amount of jaywalking, the signals have all been appropriately timed, regardless of what happens across the street, the city's encouraged us to time signals, so that they have the acro, appropriate pedestrian crossing signalization, the timing, so that the road is designed to handle pedestrians, we know there's residents up there, we know there's residents at the Bat yard, we know that there's gonna be more, there's a lot of businesses on both sides, those people are gonna be walking back and forth, um, already, they do today, in a much, um, I think, more straining environment, so, we've already, this goes back many years of planning, we've taken a lot of steps to accommodate the pedestrian evolution of the Lower Broadway area, through the Boulevard feel, through the very large sidewalks that are gonna be put in, um, so there's a lot of things that have been worked on, and I don't, I don't think, um, you've actually seen the full picture of what Broadway's gonna look like until, you know, all this work gets through. Yeah. And so, I think you will be pleased that it's going to be a significantly improved area for pedestrians, residents, citizens, it, look, it's our number-one priority, the last thing that we want as an organization is, is that somebody gets hurt in the neighborhood, somebody gets hurt in the area, either visiting our park, visiting our facility, or one of our guests who wants to walk back the other way. Sure. It's the last thing that anybody wants.
Thank you for that, and, uh, I just hope that we can, before, would it be before this, uh, opening, or? Councilman, you're actually over five, if you, uh, I have another speaker ahead of you, if you'd like to.
Okay, I'll, I'll reserve my time for my second round.
If you could pick it up for the second round, please.
Thank you.
Councilman Simonelli.
Thank you, Mr. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you for Councilman Simonelli, just to make a comment that this is good for Everett, and this is good for Encore, and I support it.
Thank you, Counselor.
Council McKinnon.
Oh, I can go, thank you.
Second round.
It's like my teacher back in high school, may I? Yes, you may.
You're burning up your time, it's okay.
Five more minutes, more.
Just getting back to that point, will this, and, and this is my last point on it, will there be something in place before the opening? Or no?
Uh, there will be robust pedestrian crossing plan in place before the opening of the res, of the parking lot, or opening of the resort, there is a plan in place, um, already, in the design. There's, there's, it's unfeasible to even figure out, the permitting of a bridge is extremely complicated.
Sure.
Uh, the designing of a bridge is extremely complicated, and to do all that in nine months, I think is unfeasible.
So, it will not be done be, before the opening, all right, and, um, do you have a timeframe on when that may be opening? For the, for a tunnel, or a?
Well, we have a timeframe of less than thirty-six months.
You do?
Well, I mean, the, so the, this, this, uh, the use that would be proposed across the street is only up to thirty-six months, we have, we didn't buy the property, it was far too expensive, you probably know some of the owners down there, property was far too expensive to.
I bet.
To put in a surface parking lot, so that's not our CEO's goal, it's not our board's objective, our objective is to develop complementary, uh, uses across the street, with more hotel rooms, and retail, and restaurants, and create a lively environment for the, for the community and the whole area, um, that, there's a planning process that needs to happen, so, we need to, it's very similar to the, the last process that we did with the casino, you have to get your MIPA, um, permits from the state, there's a large planning process, there's more mitigation measures that comes in, there's more traffic studies that have to go in, and all that is part of, when you shake it all together, the formula of the, you know, is it the bridge here, is it the bridge over there, is it both bridges, is it, there's a whole complicated formula of how you get to mitigating, um, increased, uh, transportation and demands and pedestrian levels, and.
Absolutely. Um, the, so, for the opening stage of the game here, um, from this parking lot to that property, to your property, how is that gonna work? Can you just give us an example of just how that would work, or is there going to be police presence down there, doing crossings?
There will, at certain times, absolutely be police presence, and if needed, there would, there'd be police presence as much as we need, we foresee it as, either ti, the lights are timed appropriately to handle most traffic in most days, um, in the event that there's a special event or activity, we've already been in discussions with the Everett Police Department, um, to work out how that works, the other thing that is part of our transportation mitigation measures, is, believe it or not, the, so the city of Boston has a robust, um, transportation center.
Yeah.
Where they can control, they have cameras, they can control traffic lights all over the city, Sullivan Square's not part of that, so what we've been doing is taking it up from Austin Street all the way up Rutherford Ave, connecting all the signals and the new work that we're doing in Sullivan Square, um, we're taking it under the bridge, and the city of Boston has been working closely with, uh, Everett, City of Everett, and City of Everett is allowing connectivity to the lights along Lower Broadway up to Suites Circle, and what that allows is eyes on everything, and the whole system can run then seamlessly, so if there's, for instance, an event at the Garden, or an event with us, or an event anywhere else, the Hood Park, whatever it is. The, the lights can happen in a sequence, as opposed to how they are today, where, you know, one city's controlling them one way, that's all very manual, it's not very fluid.
So, so you guys, uh, mixed into the Command Center for Boston?
Yes.
With the camera systems that they have in play?
The city of Everett did, yes.
Okay.
So the city of Everett will, and they'll be coordinating the transportation timing and everything, um, with the city of Boston.
It's a huge system, I know it well.
Do you, I don't know it very well, it looks very complicated, and, uh, it, it's very advanced, but I think it will do, um, it will create a significant improvement for this community.
Fifteen people that sit in the Command Center looking at it, so, that's, it's huge, all the camera systems there, uh, I thank you for your time, thank you, Mr. President, for giving my second, uh, go-around, not a problem, Council, you did a good job. Council Capone.
Thank you, Mr. President, through you to, uh, Mr. Taco, uh, good evening, I just, the, the topic of what's actually before this body, I think, just got a little bit confused, so, I just want to make sure we, we kind of pull it in, what's before us is simply amending the zoning ordinance for Lower Broadway, whether or not you want to have the ability for an individual or organization to petition for a permit for a parking, uh, lot, it's not specific to your organization, who you represent, it's anyone. Um, I don't have any concerns about your organization handling it in the proper way, I just want to make sure that, uh, uh, my colleagues understand the process, and, once this is ordained, it, the only body that a petitioner will need to do is permit for the planning board, and they'll set the pri, priorities, the perimeters, all the requirements, uh, at that point, correct?
That's correct. Okay, thank you very much, I don't have any other questions, thank you. Council McGlaughlin.
Mr. President, I just wanted to, uh, maybe off to your main subject, but Council Matuski talked about today being at the groundbreaking, and something happened today that was really significant, I just wanted to bring it to the attention of my, my colleagues, something that I really.
Is it relevant to the motion?
It's not, and it's okay if.
Then I, then I can't allow it.
Okay, that's fine.
Okay, we have a motion before us. All right. Excuse me, thanks. Okay, excuse me, thank you, okay, before we, uh, before we take a vote on, and it's already, we have a motion for favorable action, it's already been seconded. Excuse me, thanks? We've done that, and you just need to.
I'm good, okay, thank you.
Bye, Johnny.
Mr. Taco, if I could, Mr. Taco, from the chair, uh, though I would ask, this gets approved tonight, when you make your, your, uh, you have set things up with the planning board, if you could inform our administrative aide of when those meetings are, so the membership here can be aware of it, so those that feel inclined to appear can do so.
Absolutely, well, I'll communicate that all back to Mike Mangan.
Great, thank you.
And, um, also Sergio, just so you know, has been involved in the whole process as well, so as the city clerk's office, so. city clerk's office, so.
All right, before we get, before we vote on this, though, I need to accept the motion to have our administrative assistant, Mike Mangan, filling in as clerk this evening. So, most, all in favor?
Aye.
Posed? The ayes have it. Okay. We have a motion before you for favorable action. It's been seconded. Clerk will read the roll.
Counselor Capone.
No.
Counsel, Counsel DeFlorio.
Yes.
Counsel DePiero.
Yes.
Counsel Hanlon.
Yes.
Counsel Marquezey. Counsel Matouski.
Yes.
Counsel McKinnon.
Yes.
Counsel McLaughlin.
Yes.
Counsel Semenelli.
Yes.
And President Napolitano.
Yes.
Eight ayes, one nay, Mr. President. You have ordained.
Okay, you have ordained item number one. Clerk will read item number two.
Mr. President, just with the sake of time, I do see some guests here. I think, at least I would like to move to suspend the rules and take item three, out of respect for the guests that were here last meeting.
Okay, we have a motion to suspend the rules, take item number three. Have a second. All in favor? Posed? The ayes have it. Clerk will read item number three.
Item number three, Mr. President, is an order offered by Counsel Peterina Napolitano as president to authorize a green solar energy power purchase agreement for a twenty-year contract with Sincafia Solar LLC under the Massachusetts DOE R smart program for community shared solar development.
Counsel, Counsel McKinnon, uh, excuse me, Counsel McLaughlin.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, if we can invite up our guest this evening.
Can I have a second? All in favor? The ayes have it. Posed? The ayes have it.
And I do know that the mayor is in the building. I was just speaking with him, but I did have a question for him at the last meeting, and it was one of the requests that I had was to see if he could come tonight.
Would you like to invite the mayor's chief of staff up before us?
I'd like to invite the mayor. So, I don't know if our clerk can try to get in touch with the mayor, but I'd like to invite the mayor, and I asked for that at the last meeting, one extent of the committee.
Are you putting that in the form of a motion? Have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Posed? The ayes have it. So, now, if there's a motion from the city council to ask the mayor to appear, would you see if that would be possible? Would you look into that for us, please?
Can we ask questions and wait?
Yes, well, okay. Counsel McLaughlin, do you want to continue?
He can wait for the mayor to come in.
Yeah, I'm gonna yield the floor, I'm gonna yield the floor to my colleagues.
Counsel Capone.
Thank you, Mr. President. Could we also have Mr. Demus before us as well?
I have a motion, Mr. Demus, before us. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Posed? The ayes have it.
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you to our invited guests. First, the individuals, thank you very much for appearing again. I realize it's a twenty-year contract. Obviously, ten years isn't gonna cut it. You're putting substantial investment into this, and you wanna be able to reap the benefits of the program. I imagine that would take a twenty-year window, equipment probably has a twenty-year lifespan, all that kinda stuff. So, is that the driving force between twenty versus a different number?
Well, once again, just to identify myself, Keith Akers, I'm the vice president of development with Sincarfa Solar, where the ultimate owner-operators of all these sites. Mr. Councilman, to your question, yes. Twenty years is a requirement for all the reasons that you talked about.
Okay. And I know that there's a discount. Was it one and a half cents on the rate?
Yes, sir.
And if the rate goes up, the rate goes down, the one and a half travels with it?
That's correct.
Okay, so there's never a situation where the city's exposed and we end up owing money, losing, losing the discount?
That's correct. There's no floor, no ceiling, nothing like that.
And also part of the terms, there's no solar panels in the city of Everett?
That's correct.
Okay. And thank you very much. To our gentlemen here, Mr. St. Louis and Mr. Demus, this isn't costing the city a dime?
That's correct.
Okay, it's twenty-year situation. I don't think this was a hundred percent of the city's electricity use, is it?
This is about seventy-five percent.
About seventy-five percent, okay. So, at least we'll, we'll see savings on that seventy-five percent. It won't cost us anything. We're not gonna have solar panels in the community. If the rate goes down, we still get the benefit of the, the discount, and we've got a communication from our city solicitor who cannot be here, but she did look at the contract, and she says she sees it as a benefit to the community. So, thank you very much for your work on it. Thank you, gentlemen. I don't have any other questions.
Counselor DeFlorio.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My only concern on this is, and I don't know if the question was already asked, it's a twenty-year contract. I always hesitate on contracts for that long. The only thing I look at twenty years or thirty years is a house mortgage, and it's gonna be locked in with the interest rate. So, in this case, you're saying there's a fifteen percent discount. Is that correct? What is the actual, just give me a number on the, the actual discount?
Yeah, it's a penny and a half discount fixed.
So, if it's a penny and a half discount, hypothetically, five years from now, a company comes in and wants to give us two cents, what happens in that case? Do you, do you match the two cents? I mean, I...
So, as, in the, in our contract, that's currently written, we do not have to match it, as long as we're not in default of any of the obligations in the contract. There's, there's no opportunity for the city to renegotiate unless we're in default of the contract.
Okay, so the city is locked in for twenty years, and one and a half cents, is that correct?
That's correct.
And the only way we could come out of that contract is if you default.
Yes, correct.
So, to add on to that, we did review the market rate with a number of other firms, and we did reach out to a number of other communities. We have separately been contacted by any number of independent firms that are looking to use this DOE R smart program as a mechanism for their solar developments. We believe that due to the fact that Everett has never done one of these agreements before, we have a large cash available to purchase this energy credit. Some of the communities are not in that situation. They've bought into previous SREC programs. So, due to our volume that we're using right now, we're getting a rate that exceeds that of other offers we've...
No, I mean, I'm not against saving the taxpayer money, don't get me wrong. It just, I just don't, I don't feel comfortable being tied into a contract for that long. That's my opinion. Because you're actually gambling. You don't know if it's good or bad.
I will say, this, this is basically how the DOE R has set up the program. It's basically a twenty-year metric, so that's the way the, the smart program's structured.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. The mayor is here. I'm going to put back the floor to Counsel McLaughlin. I want to take a motion to invite the mayor before us. Second. All in favor? Posed? The ayes have it. Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for leaving the meeting you were in to come out and share...
Good evening.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Counsel McLaughlin, good.
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you to our mayor. Mr. Mayor, can you just explain to me briefly why you decided that this would be good for the city? It's a twenty-year, Counsel DeFlorio just hit on my concern. A twenty-year contract of any sort raises concern to me that we lock ourselves into anything for such a long period of time. And I was just wondering what your, you know, you as the chief executive, what your thought was when you decided that this would be...
Excuse me, I would ask all members to speak directly into their, into their mics. We have had feedback from ECTV. Residents cannot hear you, so please make sure you speak directly into your microphone.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
So, I was just wondering if you could elaborate just briefly on what your thinking process was to sign into a twenty-year agreement with this company and these individuals.
If I was a city council member, I'd have a hard time voting on a twenty-year agreement. I told Mr. St. Louis that, especially with power, energy, such a changing, evolving industry. But this is really my department head taking the lead on, on, you know, getting us a better contract for energy use. We are saving money. Twenty years is a long time, and an industry that's changing every day. But we got some, I know, Mr. Demus reached out to the former secretary of environmental affairs, right, RJ Lyman?
Yes.
Got, he got an opinion. He can tell you about that opinion. Mr. St. Louis is doing a lot of, a lot of work on this. He actually reached out to some of the vendors that reached out to me years ago to do an agreement, and the mayor of Pittsville, I believe, who represented a group. You had Dan Bianchi from Spray Energy, who, who was trying to get me to go a different route way back when. Yeah, it's, it's difficult. I, you know...
Are you comfortable?
He says it's, he says it's a good deal. You know, am I comfortable? You know, every day it's changing, right? You get the, you know, it's a changing industry, right? Solar, wind, water, you know, talking about battery storage and all these different sources that are providing energy, to provide energy for the grid, and what's the savings a year now? It's gonna be about half a million dollars a year? Is that what it is? Two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars worth saving a year? So, we're locked in a twenty-year contract. We cannot renegotiate anytime?
Unless we're in default.
Unless you're in default.
Not to put you on the spot, Mr. Mayor. I really didn't mean to do that. I apologize. But I just wanted to know that you were comfortable.
Badger them, and if you like their answers, vote for her. If you don't, we'll have to go back to the drawing board.
I just wanted to know that you're comfortable putting your stick and you're on the line at the end of the day, because if...
I don't like a contract more, I don't like even giving my department heads a year contract. Never mind giving anyone a twenty-year contract. So, I, you know, you know, Mr. Demus is gonna test it at, you know, it's a tough industry, and I'm not a professional in this. And, you know, if you wanna hold off and invite some more experts or do some research on it, do it. We can, I mean, have we, we put an RFPL, correct? Have we put an RFPL for... So, I mean, maybe we can put an RFPL, try to get some more vendors to come in and propose some stuff, so.
I'm just hearing from my colleague, from one side of that, it's time-sensitive. Time-sensitive to who? If the mayor is saying that we have options to be able to go maybe alter an RFPL or to other options, who's it time-sensitive to then in that case?
Sure. So, a couple of things that are worth touching on, but first, directly to your point, this smart program, as this new solar program is called, is supposed to come out in early October. Based on all the industry groups that we're a part of and our own internal analysis, once the program opens up, there's enough pent-up demand from solar developers and owner-operators like ourselves, where the program should be filled up within a month, maybe a month and a half. At that point, there hasn't been any talk of a successor solar program yet. That's not to say that there might not be one, but right now, there hasn't been any talk. This program took about two years to come to full form. The incentives in this program, about fifty percent of what the incentives were for SREC two. SREC two is about probably fifty percent of what SREC one is. So, the trend is going down as opposed to up for additional savings to go out to off-takers like the city. So, in terms of time sensitivity, it is important to us as an owner-operator to get an off-taker signed up for financing purposes. But I will say, on the other side of the table, we are talking to other counterparties as well. We are having ongoing contract negotiations where we have exchange contracts with the attorneys. So, once this program opens up and it does fill up, and off-takers are subscribed, there might not be another opportunity for the city of Everett to get into this program. You might have to wait for another program if it comes up.
My question is, why do we, why do we...
Counselman, Counselman, you're over your five minutes. I have two other speakers. You're more than welcome to speak on the second time around.
Just to add on, if I may?
Please.
There's also different blocks within this program. So, the first block is most incentivized, and that declines thereafter. So, literally, the first one, out of the gate, saves the most money. Once we go into that second block, we likely need to renegotiate or have further discussions.
Renegotiate? What do you mean renegotiate? I thought we...
Go ahead. No, to be, to be clear, and not to put words in your mouth, but, so we have, various projects are gonna go into this program, and there are eight blocks in which these projects can fall into. Our projects are gonna fall into various blocks. Some will be in block one, some will be in block three, some might even be in block eight. But regardless of the blocks that they fall into, the rate that we're being offered to the city will not change. I think to the better point of what might be trying to be made is, if you miss this program, then there is no discount to be offered. There's no rate to be discussed, because there are no projects. There are no incentives to go out. So, as this contract has been negotiated now with the projects that we have in it, regardless of the block that we fall into, the rate is staying the same. The one and a half percent, oh, sorry, one and a half cent discount will, will not change.
But do you, do you see the cost of energy going down at any time?
I mean, depends on a variety of factors, like you touched about.
But just recently, the whole, the, the new project, the wind, the wind product down at...
Off the Cape.
Off the Cape, right? That's a new, you know, that's supposed to generate X amount of megawatts of energy and supply to the grid. What will that do for the market?
Well, I think the, the important thing to keep in mind, which the councilman at the very end touched on, is whether the energy rate goes up or down, you're still gonna get the fixed savings.
We have a fixed saving, which is good for our budget.
Correct.
Right, so, yeah.
So, whether, so whether the power rate goes up or goes down, you're still saving money, money that you wouldn't otherwise be, be saving without a contract like this through the smart program.
Why does it have to be twenty years? Can we...
Sure, 'cause the, the way the smart program is currently written up, it's a twenty-year tariff program. The way that we've done all of our contracts and every other owner-operator that I know have matched their contracted revenue streams with the term of the PPA, because it's a twenty-year program with a twenty-year tariff. That's why we're going for twenty years. That's what the financiers are looking for, to have the locked-in revenues for the same amount period as the program.
Counsel Manlon.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You want to say something?
Well, I just wanted to make, if I may, just to make a point, I think it's important that even if that large block of wind energy came in and depressed energy prices, again, you're indifferent to that under this contract. Your, your overall energy rates may well be going down with that, and that's, that's a good thing, right? But this contract is just the credits, right? And we're still selling you credits at a discount of one and a half cents. You'll still be able to bank that into your budget. So, your energy rates may be going down in general because of future supply costs.
So, our rates could go down?
Yeah, and we're not locking your purchase price, right, of energy. All we're doing is selling you...
SREC.
A credit.
Credits.
A credit, a national grid credit. Today's worth ten point eight cents. We sell it to you at a one and a half cent discount. If the rate of energy in two years goes down to seven point two cents, we're selling you that credit that's worth seven point two cents at five point seven cents. That's all we're doing. We're selling you currency. That's all we're doing. And, and your energy rates will be moving. There's no question. And it may go up, and it may go down, but you're indifferent under this contract. You're indifferent to those movements, because your energy saving is that is offered by this contract. That is fixed, and that's the nice budget quality that I think is the most attractive part of this contract.
I have three counselors who haven't spoken yet. I have three that wanna continue speaking. Counsel Manlon, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If I ask the question that was asked before, I apologize, because it wasn't at the first part of this meeting. But just some questions all around that I wanna ask. Now, the first one is, how do I benefit from this as a citizen of the city of Everett? Is it just lower taxes or lower cost of our operation? I mean, am I, can I buy this electricity for my house? Is this one of the things that I can do?
Sure. So, to the first part, Greg, I'll, I'll let you touch on that, and I'll touch on the second part.
Sure. So, the individual resident is seeing the savings through taxes and operational costs. Absolutely. We spend about two point eight million a year on national grid electric energy. If we sign up with this, we'll get a two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar deduction from that on an annual basis.
That's, that's for the city?
For the city.
Okay, now, I, I, my, my bill, I mean, you know, they ask me to, you know, clean energy, and you want all your electricity by community. I say, yeah, that'll be okay here. But how does that happen? How do they know that I only want clean energy to supply my house? And what happens if clean energy goes out the window and they can't find it anymore? Where am I? And where would the city be if you can't produce what you're gonna be saying?
Green power, brown power. We don't do aggregate buys yet.
So, well, two things that are worth touching on there. The first one was to your question about how can the average citizen of Everett benefit? So, all these projects that are being proposed are what are known as community shared solar projects, and what that means is fifty percent of the, of the power that's generated can be sold to, to large off-takers, cities or municipalities like the city of Everett. The other fifty percent can go to smaller retail or directly to residential customers of the applicable utility, in this case, national grid. So, we have a community solar marketing team that actually goes out to various cities, which we'd be happy to do something in conjunction with the city of Everett if they are interested to do that, and market these projects. are interested to do that, and market these products, these savings, um, to the residents. So, we have contracts that we signed up with individual residents of national grid where we offer a ten percent discount, um, off their, their, uh, basic service rate off their bill. And if we haven't executed a contract, then we present that to national grid, so they know we actually have a contract, we have to show the u- utility bill. And that way, national grid, when they build the individual customer, those credits show up on your bill. Um, so while we have this big contract for the fifty percent off-take with the city, there's also the opportunity to have similar contracts for ten percent savings with the residents of the city of Everett.
I, I think I got that.
Because you're the supplier.
Correct.
The other question is that, you know, we're talking about a twenty-year program, and for this, I don't think twenty years is a long time at all. And, you know, I'm, I'm wondering what happens at the end of twenty years? Do, can we just continue on with this, or do we go to someplace else? Or, uh, do you wanna stop with Everett? Do you say, no, twenty years is enough with Everett, and you guys are on your own now?
So, so the only reason the contract is twenty years is, as we touched on, that's the length of the current SMART program as proposed. After the end of the twenty years, uh, we, we could easily extend the contract. Um, it might be on different terms because of the incentive would no longer be the same that you're getting from the state, but there's nothing that would preclude us from having a similar contract after the end of that twenty years.
Okay.
It's just this initial twenty-year term is pegged to the SMART program, twenty years.
Okay, um, um, I think I understand. You guys are a new company? Is a new company coming out?
Pardon?
Are you, are new company coming out?
No, sir. So, we have, uh, to date, we've done over about a hundred megawatts throughout the U.S., uh, but we've done, and more specifically, about fifty within the Commonwealth. Um, and we've done. Yeah, I'm not sure, so this is the, in the PowerPoint that we handed out last week.
Do you have a copy? Would you like to see it?
Sure.
Just send it down.
There's a whole series of our projects. We've been at this for a decade in Massachusetts.
No, well, well, to come down to what my question would be.
Yes.
Is that, you know, as you guys are gonna be successful and you wind up with a hundred more cities, does that put Everett at a risk of being just in the wrong place at the wrong time because you guys can't supply all the electricity that they're saying you can?
That's a very good question. So, this, these, these contracts, this contract that we're talking about here would be applicable to, to certain projects that are outlined within the PowerPoint. And we, and we're not gonna oversubscribe those projects. If we get the Everett, the ci- the city of Everett to sign up, we're not gonna go out and oversell it and put you at a disadvantage. By signing the contract, you're locking in to a certain percentage of megaw- of megawatt hours at that discount.
Okay, okay. Mr. Chairman, thank you. That concludes my questions.
Councilman Casey.
Uh, looking at the cities that you've approached, we're really the first urban city that you've offered this to. Greater Boston anyhow.
Well, not necessarily true. So, the cities that were, that you listed there, the cities where we have projects currently existing, uh, the reason that you don't, you don't see many cities in this area is because of the urban density. There's not a lot of open land besides rooftop systems. So, that's why you haven't seen a lot of solar projects in general, um, in this national grid NEMA service territory.
Um, just four questions. I mean, I, I needed the answer, the give a vote because I'm not really sure. Now, you said that this'll, uh, take up seventy-five percent of the city's, uh, power for the next twenty years?
So, well.
No, for the, not the city, the city itself, the, the, to run the city of Everett, the, uh, what, the municipal.
The, the PPA is structured based on seventy-five percent of our annual, uh.
Why can't we get a hundred percent and be the first person here that, that they sell it to and? Well, I mean, it's, it can't be that much, much more. I mean, if you, we're opening, we're actually open the door for them to, to come over to any urban place around. I don't think it's that crazy.
There, there are other energy-saving measures the city could be undertaking. We, we are a member of the green communities, um, recipients of the green communities grants that have come out in the past. A lot of that is energy savings-based. It's switching light bulbs over to LEDs, that types of things. We have a street lighting, uh, program that we're looking to swap out all of the halogen and hydrogen sulfide lights to, uh, LEDs. That will, again, lower the city's overall expenditure. So, some of that buffer is in anticipation of other energy efficiencies that the city may undertake.
Oh, so that's unnecessary, seventy-five percent. It's counting the lights and all this. So, this isn't seventy-five percent?
The future projects that may take.
Future project that may, okay. Um, now, do we have any option on this? Or is it just strict, straight-through for twenty years? Is there a five-year option that we could come back and review this? Because we're gonna have to review it somehow to find out if they're ever in default, and how do we know if you're in default?
So, to answer your first question, no, there's no options in there to, to renegotiate after five or ten or fifteen years. Um, and to my knowledge, we haven't done that in any of the PPAs that we've executed to date. Um, and it's not common, at least in my experience within the industry. Um, how would you know that we're in default? Um, so there are certain re- reporting requirements that we have to perform within the contract. Um, but more, more, more specifically than that, if we're not operational, that we're not generating those credits, therefore, those credits aren't showing up on your bill. Um, so therefore, that would be a, obviously, a telltale sign that, that we're not living up to our end of the contract.
All right, thank you.
Councilman McKenon.
Through you, Mr. President, to our invited guests. Uh, let me see. Are you guys the only companies that is, is doing this currently today?
No, sir. No, sir. Um, there are, there are plenty of other solar, solar players within the Commonwealth.
So, why are we going just solely with you?
So, we had been, had been in conversations with Greg and his team for probably going back since six months now. Um, and Greg, you can probably talk more intelligently than I, than I am, but, uh, we're not the only company that's been vetted. Um, I'm not sure how many you, you, you have spoken to, but we're not the only player at the table. Um, but feel free to elaborate.
So, certainly, a number of communities go through energy brokers to do a similar task that I did, reaching out, figuring out what market rate is. Uh, the program's coming out, you know, eminently, so it's not already live. So, um, getting a handle on what is market rate was my first task. A lot of the companies that come into the door are just saying ten percent, ten percent, ten percent. And that's for, you know, average commercial developers or, you know, maybe Teddy Peanut Butter or, or a good-sized commercial industry might be able to just get ten percent off, lock it in, call it a day. But we're looking at a volume that's, say, ten times that.
Sure.
So, we have the, the buying capacity, the buying power to negotiate and leverage that volume. So, I reached out to a couple of other, um, solar developers in the industry to see what, what would they go up above that ten percent? And if it was a, you know, if it wasn't just a percentage, were they willing to lock it as a fixed rate to provide that surety that, um, the city looks for in planning its budget year to year? So, following that process, um, we got to a point with, uh, two firms that were, you know, on the rise. And, uh, I met with the CFO and we said, you know, let's see, let's see if they'll come to this number, and then we can really progress. And, uh, Renewable Energy Massachusetts and Syncarfa, uh, went back, you know, crunched their numbers and said, we'll do it, so.
I, I have a, a couple of questions. And. We've, we've had TIF agreements here before that worked out and some possibly didn't work out, we'll say, but, um, twenty years, and there's no renegotiation on that. So, that would be, uh, kind of a sticking point, I would think. And then, uh, why is it time-sensitive now?
Sure, so, um, as I mentioned earlier, one.
Two-part question.
Sure.
Why is this time-sensitive? Three-part question. Who oversees the reporting that you, uh, you do?
Hmm.
And then, uh, any penalty on a default from you guys to the city?
Sure.
So, that's a three-part question.
Sure, so, first part, um, multiple prongs to it, but first one has to do with the program opening up eminently in mid, early October. Two, has to do with the pented-up demand for that program, which, based on our analysis and what we hear, it's probably gonna be subscribed, fully subscribed, within a month or two months. Um, and three, the incentives offered in this program are fifty percent of what they were in SREC two, which were likely fifty percent of what they were in SREC one.
Okay.
So, any future program will be likely a lower discount than what's currently being offered now because it's, because of the trend of going down. To your second question about the reporting, um, so I, as I mentioned, if we're not generating credits, they're not showing up to national grid, and they're not showing up on your bill. Um, this would probably come from Greg and the DPW's review of all these credits as they're showing up on the energy bills. Uh, we have our own internal billing department, we have our own customer service department. So, if there's any questions that Greg or his team has about why the bills aren't, why, why the numbers aren't where they should be in order to, to realize those yearly savings, they can easily call us, and then that's a conversation that we have to have.
Um. So, that re- that report would come from your company?
Correct, so we, so we have, we have all, we have actively monitoring all of our sites. We have data that we track. We can give these production estimates to Greg and his team on a monthly basis. Um, and, like I said, the, the credits actually show up on the national grid bill. So, if the actuals aren't hitting the estimates, then there is a discrepancy there that we would have to explain, whether it's downtime related to weather, whether it's equipment downtime.
So, it'll be an explanation from your company?
Correct, correct.
Okay.
Correct.
Any penalties on a default?
So, in, in the contract right now, the, the buyer, which would be the city of Everett, can cancel without termination if the sites aren't operational by the end of 2019. If we cancel after the contract has been in existence, um, there are currently no penalties in there. However, at a review by the, the city and, and their internal legal, uh, they have proposed LDs in there. The numbers haven't been decided yet, but they have come back to us to put in LDs in the contract.
So, there's been nothing decided?
Yeah.
May Councilman.
And, and, and to that question, um.
Mr. President, if I may, um, just to get this last piece.
Absolutely.
Reason being is because if I don't get it, I'm not voting for it tonight.
No, no, absolutely, by all means. But please, for the guests, pay mind, the membership are limited to five minutes per time.
That's why I'm asking you two questions.
Okay, I'm allowing, I've been allowing some latitude here because the explanations are, are, are extensive and informative, but I also have to, I also have other members that have other questions as well. So, please, gotta keep that in mind, that that's what we're trying to work under those, just simple procedural procedure.
Sure, sure. And the last thing that I wanna mention is Councilman, um, so, so the contract is currently being reviewed by, by the legal team, and there is, and there is comments coming back to us, but that was one of the big ones that was mentioned, that there has to be damages in there that goes to the city's benefits should we default at any time during the contract, and that's not uncommon.
And we, we should know that prior to this coming before us, what those penalties would be. You see what I'm saying?
Yeah.
So, I mean, it, uh, we understand it's time-sensitive, we under, you know, we're understanding everything has to get done ASAP, but that's a major, major, um, it's a major thing within the contract because we don't know what the default penalty would be, and you can't give us an answer tonight on that.
Two parts, sorry, and I'll, and I'll keep it quick. One, we haven't had a proposal from, from the city of what they'd like to see, so we haven't had a chance to have that conversation. Um, but two, uh, you know, to, to approve, to, to allow the city to vote on a contract or to approve a contract over three years, to go up to twenty years, um, that's, that's, that's what I wanna focus on here. We're not necessarily going to approve a, a contract that hasn't been fully negotiated yet. But what, what we're looking for is have the city council members' approval of a contract that can go up to twenty years pending the city's legal team fully vetting and putting in all these additional clauses that, that the city wants to see.
If Syncarfa did default by, um, let's say there were lightning strikes at their facilities and they failed to repair them, we have a hundred and eighty-day, basically, escape clause where we can leave the contract at that time.
And then we would seek another additional company to come in and take it, okay.
Thank you. Councilman, if you have any further questions, please add them on the second time around.
Yeah.
Okay, so, we're in the second round right now. Councilman DeFlorio.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, after dealing with national grid all these years, and we can't even get a light bulb changed, this is why, what, what, we, the heat is on tonight, okay? So, a lot of my questions have been answered, but my question is, when the lights go out over here, do we pay for the electricity? Because we're saving a lot more than two million dollars. We have no lights out. We have all the lights out in the city.
Our electric bill's lower.
Yeah. Uh, but anyways, my question is gonna be very simple. Put the contract together, give us a copy of the contract, tell us what the defaults are, and we'll vote on this on next meeting. I wanna see the contract. We're voting on something that we don't know what we're getting. We don't know what default is, okay? We don't know what default means. Default, when you say default, you know, if I default on paying my mortgage, they take the house. So, if you default and not giving me electricity, what do we take? I have too many kids. I don't want any more. So, so to me, I think that, write up the contract. We, in other words, I understand you want us to vote to say we, we wanna give you the contract, but how can we give you a contract when we don't know what's in the contract? So, I think the first thing to do is, our, our next meeting is in, what, October, uh?
If I, if I could, if I could, I, I apologize to the, to the, to the council. Uh, there was a communication from the city solicitor, um, and again, I didn't realize it was up here until just now, and I'm reading it. Um, she'd been asked, and if I could, this is from the city solicitor, uh, Colleen Mahat. Uh, I've been asked to attend the special city council meeting scheduled for September seventeenth to speak on the above- referenced agenda item. Been unable to attend, um, again, for personal reasons, I won't go into the details on that. I've reviewed the agreement in question, and I am comfortable with the terms of the agreement. The city has negotiated significant savings with energy costs which will be realized each year for the life of the agreement. I am a co- I am confident this agreement is a benefit of the city. I just thought that, I just thought that the city solicitor's opinion should be read for your, and you should be informed.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I agree with that. I did read it, but this says agreement, it doesn't say contract. To me, there's a difference between the agreement and the contract. It's a verbal agreement, there's no contract.
They mean the same thing.
Well, there's no default clause, so I, I respect the city solicitor, and I respect what she's saying. She's saying that this is a good deal.
I'm not trying to sway, I'm not trying to sway your, your conversation. I just wanted, I should have read that beforehand.
I have no problem voting for something like this. If I can save the taxpayer even a dollar, I don't have an issue, okay? I have no problem at all saving, but I have to be careful. I, I, okay, I can't regret this five years from now.
I understand.
And we, we, we're not here, it's not because people make mistakes. You give TIFs or whatever, and things don't work out. You do it with good intention. And I'm sure, uh, they all have good intentions here. I'm not going against anybody. I just wanna be secure for the future, okay? Twenty years, I may not be here, but my children and grandchildren will be here, and so will, uh, you know, your children, however. So, I just wanna feel secure on what I'm voting on. That's my, my opinion.
Sure, and, and I can appreciate that, that, that sentiment. Um, the one, the one thing that I'll add, and you can take it with a grain, a grain of salt, if, if you like, of all the dozens of contracts that we've executed for all of our projects, we have never defaulted once on those. Um, and if we do have a project that's up and operational, and heaven forbid, there's an issue, there's a lightning strike or a fire and we lose some of the plants, obviously, we have insurance on all these sites, and it's in our best interest to rebuild the site, um, to get it up and operational as quickly as possible. Um, 'cause in addition to having the city as an off-taker, we also have financing obligations Because in addition to having the city as an off-taker, we also have financing obligations, not only to our tax equity provider, but also to our equity provider as well. So likelihood of us, if there's an issue, of just sitting idly on our hands and not doing anything about it, is zero percent, I would say, because we have no invested interest to do that, and it only hurts us to do that.
No, I have no issue with that, and I do trust Mr. St. Louis, believe me, I do. If this was for my home, right now, I would sign the contract, but my eyes closed. But this is for the citizens in the City of Everett, and I think we need to put them at ease on what we're doing here. I trust every one of you up there, okay? You've answered all the questions, but like I said, all I want is even bullet points of what's going to be in that contract, and then I have no problem voting for it. I don't have an issue saving the taxpayers' money. So...
Sure, so just, I...
So to me, I wouldn't make a motion to refer to our next meeting of September 24.
I think you should ask for some clarification, I'm what you're asking. Please.
Well, I was going to say, I mean, I have bullet points I can give you that are in the contract, that that would be helpful, but you don't have them in front of you right now.
But you can summarize them. I think that would be helpful.
Sure, I mean, so for...
But the contract doesn't have the default.
It has default in it, doesn't have damages in it, dollar amounts for the damages, but it has default clauses in it, that things that we have to obligate ourselves to. For example, there are certain insurance requirements we have to maintain through the life of the contract.
Right, but right now, we're lucky to save a penny for 20 years.
Penny and a half, yep.
A penny and a half. So if you default on that, and say, "I can't give you a penny and a half anymore, I can't give you a penny," what's the penalty?
So that wouldn't be a cause for default. We, by the terms of the contract, we are always going to give you a penny and a half. The only way that we would default is, once again, if we don't maintain those insurance requirement, if the company goes bankrupt, heaven forbid, if we have a site that's down and not operating for over 180 consecutive days, those are the clauses of default in there.
Right, but what do we get out of that? Like, National Grid, the lights aren't working, we get nothing out of it.
So the language right now...
We can't get them fixed.
The language right now does not restrict our actions either. It specifically says we have the right to...
Terminate the contract, we're getting nothing out of it.
To say sue, we certainly have the right to exit, but it doesn't further limit our options either. So we could sue them for lost revenues, or we could sue them for any other type of action.
So you could come out of, get out of the contract, and then sue them?
For the 180 days of lost revenue, or whatever.
Whatever, 180 days. Okay.
That's correct.
All right.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Capone?
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you to our guest. I just, there are a couple of terms that were thrown around, and I was viewing this one, you were talking about blocks. Could you just explain blocks a little bit more? And before you do, because we do have this five-minute, this is my second time, so I don't get to talk again. I just want to make sure that I understand if there's, the blocks are usage from the city, or, well, I'll let you get into that. The other thing I wanted to ask is, clearly, I agree with my colleagues, we don't have enough information to vote on this. I'm a little uncomfortable because our CEO of the city was here, and he expressed his uneasiness, and then he asked some questions that were very fundamental to the basic foundation of an agreement. I thought we would have been way beyond that at this point. So that makes me really nervous. We're talking about 20 years. So if you could explain what the blocks are, and then with regards to the information that some of my colleagues were alluding to with regard to damage clause and things of that nature, I know you were talking about insurance, and is that insurance with regards to equipment performance, or is that more akin to a bond? So that if you were to fall, for whatever reason, we don't expect that that would happen, but if there were a situation, company went default, bankruptcy, whatever the case might be, rather than having to go sue you, I'd rather have, I'd rather have a pocket right there to reach to, whether it's a performance bond, whether it's an insurance policy that protects the city, because now we have to go back and find our source of electricity from another venue. And then the last thing I would ask you is, as we're putting this together, and it may not be possible, but if it is, something that you might be willing to consider, one of the terms along the way is, let's say that the source of electricity that we were getting from now, for whatever reason, that drops tremendously. But the solar power, the expense is still high, but we're still getting the one and a half cent discount. If you're willing that if the drop, or the disparity between the two reaches a certain extent, you know, a little bit here and there, not a big deal, but if it becomes a much bigger gap, is that something that you're willing to put into the contract that, in a circumstance like that, we could be able to relook at this and maybe structure some sort of a benefit for the community? Because if it does end up with a gap like that, which I don't foresee, but let's say it does, that really wouldn't be fair to the city, would be, you know, obviously, you'd want to keep, you know, the benefit of what you've done. We've got to be fair to everyone involved. I think that that's a variable that we should be looking at. Again, not a minor deviation, but if we get a significant deviation, I'd like to see something in that contract. I don't know if you would be agreeable to a term like that, because I wouldn't want to see the city handcuffed in a bad deal for 20 years. And obviously, you don't want the city being a bad deal, and our employees here don't want it to be a bad deal. Right now, it's good. It looks like a good transaction. None of us have a crystal ball. You're in business to make a profit, but you're also providing a benefit. And if that becomes something that is a huge deviation with a benefit, I think that good faith on your company, if you want the city to go forward in the future, just customer service, it would be something that we should be able to look at. So I would ask, I'll ask if that's something that you're willing to think about as we go forward with terms, and if you could explain the blocks and all that, I'd appreciate that.
So the blocks, so each utility, EverSource, National Grid, and Unitil, are given a certain amount of megawatts in each block, and the incentives in those blocks, as Greg mentioned, the earlier ones are higher than the latter blocks. The way that you get into a block, it's based on your interconnect and service date with the utility. So it's all, the way that they set it up is they need to have blocks in place and peg it to a certain date so they can slot projects in there, so they know when the whole program is going to be filled up. So as I mentioned, it doesn't affect our deal with you in terms of the discount that's being offered, because our price is not going to change. It's more for the utilities to keep track of which projects are being given what incentive and when their allotment is filled up.
Okay.
In terms of the insurance, so we were speaking more of the former, so not a bonding with the city. Each one of our projects will have a bond with their individual town or city where they're being built, more of a decommissioning bond for the reasons that you talked about in case we go bankrupt or anything like that happens, but currently, as the contract is written, that is not with the City of Everett. To your last question, so the tariff rate that you receive, depending on the block that you go in, is fixed for a 20-year term. And as Brian mentioned earlier, that credit that each one of our solar sites generates is paid to National Grid's basic service rate.
Okay.
So if the energy prices in National Grid are going up or going down, the city's utility bills are going up and going down at that same rate, and our credit's going up and going down at that same rate, but our discount is always going to be the same. So whether power prices are going down or power prices are going up, there's never going to be a large delta, or a bigger delta, between what we're offering to the city, because it's always going to be a penny and a half off the basic service rate of National Grid.
Okay.
And I just wanted to reassure you that the insurance really was to make sure that if there was a property and casualty event, right, that there are proceeds that are available under the insurance policy to rebuild the facility. That's the whole objective, and I think that's the kind of security that the city would want to see, to make sure that that facility will be rebuilt.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. President, I'm not going to labor the issue, because I don't have enough information to make this decision, to be truthful, but I'm going to ask one question, is when did these talks or negotiations start? And why are we at the 11th hour now, under time constraint, to be able to get this done? When was this first introduced in the city? And it's now, again, the 11th hour, and we're just hearing about it in depth tonight. Councilor Capone hit on it. I thought the mayor was going to come in here and talk rah rah, it's great. His tone of voice tonight concerned me deeply. Him asking some fundamental questions and getting some answers himself is very troubling to me, that he still had questions on it, and still some clarification that he needed to be had. If he isn't 100% sold on it, he said it tonight, if I was the city council, I'd be concerned on signing onto a 20-year agreement. For him to make those type of comments, I'll be honest, I'm not prepared to vote for this tonight. But I'd just like to know when these negotiations started and why we're getting this at the 11th hour, because we are getting it at the 11th hour, and now we're being told that it's time constraint and we need to act on this now and not later.
So the biggest time factor is really just the regulations being promulgated. They're coming out in October, so being first in line is helpful.
Actually, Councilor McLaughlin has a flaw, please.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Mr. St. Louis. Actually, Ms. St. Louis was in the middle of the discussion.
Mr. Counselor, we met with the chief of staff of the mayor's office, Greg St. Louis, Sustainability Director roughly late March, to introduce the concept, and it was at that point that Mr. St. Louis went through his diligence, right, with various towns and officials and whatnot, and other companies, as he mentioned. All that process, that all took time for his internal, and with the CFO's input as well. And then there was further negotiation on the terms of the contract, as also was discussed, right? So that raised the city's discount through that time period, and so now it's being brought to you, and all we can say is, what I reiterated what I said to you last week, was, we are in negotiations with other parties, and I appreciate, you know, a 20-year contract. On the other hand, it is a fixed discount, and there are other parties that are looking at this, and it is a game of musical chairs at the end of the day. I mean, you know, I want the City of Everett to have this value, 20 years, $5.5 million, a serious amount of money, and if the city doesn't do it, you know, these opportunities are few. So that's the risk factor. You know, another company or another higher education institution is going to come along and take that, and then you may be looking for another set of projects. We offer you large scale, right, with one counterparty, multiple projects to get you the volume of credits, and at the end of the day, that is a significant benefit, that you're not dealing with a whole bunch of different counterparties. So there is that risk factor, I just have to put that out there.
No, and I respect that, but the fact that our mayor is not comfortable or sold on this completely, and it seemed like he needed more questions, I mean, I would have thought that he would have been 100% supportive of this tonight when he came in the chambers, and that's why I asked for his opinion on this, because at the end of the day, it's his signature that goes on the line on this, and he definitely did not give me a sound of confidence that he was 100% behind this. And he actually said, if he was sitting in my seat tonight, that he would be concerned about doing this. So if we're voting on this tonight, I'm going to vote no. If we're going to lay this over for further time, I respect my colleagues' wishes.
Make a motion to refer this to our next meeting with, oh, I'm sorry, excuse me for customary things.
Actually, I have one, I have one final speaker. Councilor Hamlin?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for the pass out for your last meeting. I'm sorry I wasn't here, because I do have a couple of questions on it, okay? You're indicating that you have 100 megawatts of solar power in and around the U.S. with over 50 from Massachusetts? So I'm looking at Massachusetts, and it's the, how do you say your company's name?
Syncarfa.
Say it again?
Syncarfa.
Syncarfa, okay. So finance and construction, mass solar project, and you show a bunch of them here. I got about 51, a little bit more than 51%. And I'm looking at the community shared solar portfolio detail. There's like another 49% here. These are all Massachusetts towns, so is this what makes up the 100 million?
No, sir. So the 100 megawatts is what we have...
I'm sorry. Megawatts, right.
Yeah, that's fine. The 100 megawatts is what we have done to date. The 50 are, we have 50 operating within the Commonwealth. These additional 50 are new projects, so that would get us up to over 150 megawatts in total.
So you haven't done them yet?
No, sir. So they are, those last 50 they referred to, those are the ones that are being talked about as part of this contract.
Okay, thank you. And then my last one is the shared solar portfolio, and it shows that expected project construction starts in October of 2018, and expected commercial operation is 2019, second quarter. Is that the one we're talking about that they're going to be applying?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and that's going to be built where?
All throughout Massachusetts.
So what do you do, just different places to wind up another?
That's right, sir. There's a map there that shows eight towns in highlight, and so those are distributed all around Massachusetts.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, thank you.
By all means.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Okay, I'll take a motion to excuse for customary thanks.
Motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Close? The ayes have it?
I'd like to refer this out to the full board of the council meeting, council meeting in September with no recommendation, until we get a copy of...
Okay, this isn't a committee, this would be a motion to postpone this to the next meeting.
Next meeting, right.
Correct.
Invite the city solicitor and give us a copy of the agreement.
Okay, do I have a second?
Chairman, I'd like to amend that motion for...
Councilor Hamlin.
To refer it out with favorable action.
Okay, we have a motion to, do I have a second?
What are we talking about?
Right now, there is not a motion for, this is not a committee, we're not making, we're not a referring body. If we're not going to vote on this, because this is a special meeting of the council, then the proper motion is to postpone this till our next meeting.
I have a question.
Period. And then invite anybody else who went to speak.
I have a question on this. All right, so since it's committee, a committee structure, should we...
It's not a committee structure.
Oh, okay. It's not a committee.
This is as, this is as much of a meeting as a regular meeting.
A regular meeting, because we're all in.
That's why we can make the decision tonight.
So we can vote on it tonight or not vote on it?
Or postpone it to the next meeting.
Okay.
Those are your options.
Thank you.
Okay, so just for clarification, Councilman DeFlorio, would you restate your motion?
Postpone it to our next meeting.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Would you like to invite anybody to be here?
We're going to invite the city solicitor and...
Invite the gentleman back.
The gentlemen that are here, along with Mr. Eric...
St. Louis.
Demus, and to give us a copy of the agreement. In the meantime, to have a week to get it to us.
Okay, and I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close?
Aye.
The ayes have it? Chairman, thank you for coming back up.
Thank you very much.
Clerk will read item number two.
Item number two, Mr. President, that the amount of $9,380,000 be appropriated by borrowing as requested in the CIP general fund budget.
Grab, Mr. Chairman, can we have our CFO?
Do I have a second? Have a motion to have the CFO back up before us. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it? Opposed? Okay. Councilor Capone? Oh, Councilor Hamlin?
Mr. Chairman, through you to our CFO. The amount of $9,380,000, is this the whole amount that was in the CIP?
No, it is not.
So is there more to be expected? That's what I'm looking for.
There is more to be expected. The only items that are not included in the request that's before you are all of the vehicles that, and other maintenance items, such as elevator repair, building maintenance repair. The only items that are before you tonight are the parks, construction, design and construction that were planned throughout the city, as well as a number of traffic items that are in there as well. There's no equipment in here, and we expect those to be coming before, requested before the council in the future.
Are these things that are already on, are working on, or are these all new things coming up?
Well, each of the projects that are before you require a new appropriation. However, some of the parks have already gone through a phase one, where we've gone through the design phase, and that we're moving into the construction phase. There are some projects on here, though, that are starting the design phase on brand-new projects. And we do have Mr. Souza here that's with us tonight to be able to answer any of the specific questions related to any of the projects.
I just would like to have a list of what that $9,380,000...
You do have that, you do have that detailed list. It should be on the back of the order.
Oh, okay, thank, thank you. I don't have that, but thank you anyway. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I almost said, yes, I said, okay, thank you. Almost did, yes, I said, okay, thank you.
Fable action, the order.
We have Councilor Capone.
Say, Mr. President, could we also have Tony Souza up from Community Development?
Do a motion to invite Tony Souza up before us. Do I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Can I just have it? Please state your name for the record.
Good evening, Tony Souza, attending the development.
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you to our invited guest. Thank you very much, gentlemen. I actually have a question. Can you just? Oh, okay. You know, we've been told for years now, this is the year that is going to be financially difficult. We just increased taxes by seven percent increase. Are there any projects on here that could hold off? If you could go through this list and tell us the most important ones, the ones you see as most crucial? It looks like these are all the park projects that we have going forward, and we have, this is the year where we're feeling the biggest financial constraint. Maybe we should scale back a little bit instead of doing everything at the same time. So if you guys could speak to that, I would appreciate it.
Sure. If I could jump in first, we're getting Mr. Souza a copy of the detailed list. He didn't have one with him. However, to your point that this being the most challenging year financially for the city, it absolutely is correct. Nothing has changed as far as in those regards. What the order you're authorizing right now is a bond authorization. When in the city, because of our cash flow, we've been able to actually only issue bonds once a year so that we're saving on all of our issuance costs, getting the attorneys involved and going through that process. Also, the city actually going out and obtaining a bond rating, there's a cost associated with that. So what we try to do is we try to minimize those costs, do it all at once. So the planning.
Are you saying that this will be staggered?
It will be staggered, and should you approve this, and the city is able to move forward on these projects to a certain point where we have enough progress that will actually bond these projects, the earliest we would bond any of these projects would be spring of next year, meaning that the first payments wouldn't kick in until the following fiscal year. So these actually would not have an impact on the city's operating budget this year, issuing this debt service.
Okay. And I know we have a lot of parks, but why all these projects at the same time?
So, thank you. I'm just reviewing the list here, which many of these projects, and I can go project by project if you would like.
If you, if, you know what would be good? If you could maybe prioritize these. Which ones you feel need to have the most attention sooner rather than later?
Well, they're all in, all in different queues here, so they're not just parks, right? So down below, we have two designs for Beecham Street and Suites Circle. I think those are critically important. We're in the process with all of the roadwork taking place, and that's, it is, in fairness, a good chunk of money, 200,000 and 100,000, but.
Which is pale in comparison to 1.5 million and 1.1 million.
Sure.
But, and obviously, it's an issue that needs to be addressed, correct?
And then, and then working up the tennis courts. There's a method to this.
Where are the tennis courts?
The tennis courts are down at Rosetti Park.
Okay, down on Tremont.
As you know, we were there this morning.
Tremont Street.
And I don't know if you had a chance to see the designs, but we're going to relocate the floor hockey facility down to the playground area.
Yeah, it looks like it would be adjacent to the field?
Correct.
Okay.
Now, that project will be done on May 31st of next year. And so the idea is, instead of having an empty area, the idea, they would repurpose that equipment, right, the panels and so on, bring that over to the other side. So we certainly wouldn't want to leave a good chunk of that park, you know, like 70, 60% of it, open, bare. So the idea was for to add two additional tennis courts to that, so then that way the high school can have tournaments and so on. Citywide sign and awning program, that's 130,000. Certainly, we're in the process of doing a wayfinding system in the city. If the council wanted to consider that further down the road, certainly, we're still working on the early stages of design and what a revamped sign and awning program would look like. The Everett Square improvements, they themselves, those are critically important, because we are doing some streetscape improvements ongoing. We are putting in some ornamental lights in Everett Square later this fall. Warner and Fuller Street Park design and construction, it should say construction. We've started the design already, and the idea would be to roll that out next spring. Hale and Central, those are two big tickets, 1.5 and 1.1. I don't understand the mechanics of the budgeting process, but certainly, if there was an opportunity, and I don't know if there's a window, to advance that a few months down the road, certainly would be open to that. We currently are in the design phase for those, but if there is a need, certainly, I would, I would consider those. Appleton Street, we're advancing the design. It's actually one of the most out-of-date parks. I think we may have talked about this as well. So certainly, there's a tremendous amount of merit in taking care of that as soon as we, as soon as possible. We've already advanced design, and the idea would be to go out next spring. Meadows Curran's, that's the phase two. We've completed the design. There's a typo there. It should say construction. That's my fault. That is pegged there at 1.1 million. In essence, that would complete the rest of the park we committed to phase one, correct, the playground area? And I believe now it's been a full season, and the idea is to refurbish the rest of the park so we can complete the Meadows Curran's Park in its entirety and close that off.
Okay.
Seven Acre Park, design, construction, that in itself as well, if there's an opportunity later down the road, I think we could handle that at that time. As we know, Seven Acre Park, and as was discussed today in the presentation earlier, we're talking about the playground and the field as well, but there's also discussion about having a robust football field and different amenities, bleachers and so on, and some type of stadium or stadium-like complex. That in itself is further down the road, and it is small money for the design, but certainly, if there is an opportunity to take that down the road this year, then by all means. Webster School, Tot Lot, we've done some improvements already. This would just complete the rest of the work that was done. You may recall, we did Webster School Tot Lot about two, three years ago, and this would complete the remainder. And as I recall, it's further in, I'm working with the engineering department, City Engineer Julius with respect to that. I don't know all the nuances of it, but in essence, that is completion of that project. And then citywide, design refurbished Tot Lots, that's nothing new. Every year, we have a line item in there, at least since I've been here for refurbish of, design refurbish of Tot Lots. Actually, it should, should read refurbish of Tot Lots. In essence, this is thinking about all of the, you know, the work, the winterization of the Tot Lots and so on, with the investments we're making between the painting and the rubber surfacing, and, you know, Council, I know we're familiar with all the nuances of that from another project. That line item has increased in fairness from last year, but that's also to reflect all the improvements we've done in the system, in our park system. I think we've done in the last five years about eight or nine parks.
Yeah, it's been a lot. I know, I know we're beyond the five, so just make one quick point, and then I'll move on with your.
I've got, I've got three other speakers. If you could, could you say your point to the end, or you rather?
Just a quick comment. So one thing I don't see on here is Florence Street Park that has taken four years to get the first phase of it done. I would have liked to have seen that worked into this, because the folks down there have been waiting a long time, and I'd be inclined to see if we're going to move on a phase two on any park. I'd like to see the phase two move forward on a park in the neighborhood that has been neglected for a number of years. So I just raise that to you.
Sure.
Just to take it under advisement and go from there.
I'm a fan of that, certainly, and if it's appropriate, if the council wishes to include it in this, if it is appropriate, be happy to. And we are working on the design for the phase two.
From the chair.
At the time, I'm sorry, at the time when, I apologize, when I submitted this, we weren't all the way there on phase one, so I didn't feel comfortable doing that.
Yeah, from the chair, I would personally like to see Florence Street Park open and functioning before we restrict the other half of the park from those residents. Let's make sure they have full use of phase one first.
Your point well taken, and it is open and functioning.
Councilman McLaughlin.
Thanks, President. Mr. President, through you, and Mr. Souza. Mr. Souza, stuff that stands out to me is like Seven Acre Park design and construction. I know that there is a bigger overview of what could potentially come down the road there. Do we necessarily need to do that? Or is there some of these that you honestly think would not be detrimental if we were to cut? Because, again.
Councilman, please speak into the microphone.
Sorry, Mr. President, I apologize. Thank you for reminding me. I do think that it's a big number to vote on all at once, and I'd like to have some more discussion with you regarding some of these projects. So I'm wondering if there are some of them that we could hold off and have further discussions on. Do you just share your opinion on them?
Sure. Again, as mentioned earlier, with respect to Seven Acre, Hale Central, and frankly, even the awning program, if the council feels the need to bump that down the road, we'll work within, within the council's purview. But those four, I just highlighted that if there is a desire, I think we could handle that. I certainly wouldn't want to close the opportunity, though, you know, if we can't come back, that would be detrimental. The year is long, and we run multiple projects, so I don't want to say yes or no. If, so long as I get an opportunity to come back, then certainly, I think we could put those in the back burner, if you will.
I think you're always more than welcome to come back to the chambers. The two design projects in all seriousness, Suites Circle, I know that there's going to be a tremendous amount of work done by the Encore Boston Harbor Group done in Suites Circle. So can that be held off until they do their work, and then we see where it is at that point? And then we could, and then we could go back and revisit it once they have done their work. And same thing with Beecham Street, right? They just bought that lot that was on the corner of Beecham Street. They knocked that down, the, was it Neal Salon or something on that corner there? And they're wide in the street up. You know, after that design happens and they do their work, then maybe down the road, we can revisit to see what needs to be done, or what we can, what we should be looking at at that point. But I think those two areas are heavily worked on currently by Encore, and I'm not sure that we would be really beneficial to start a design project with them already significantly working out on those two sites. Any thought on that could be?
I mean, your point's well taken. Certainly, if the council wishes to revisit that down the road, by all means, I'd be open to that.
So then, truthfully, and I'm just going to finish on this one, these talks tonight, we've basically cut this list in half realistically. I mean, we've taken six or seven projects off of here that we've said that we would be able to revisit later on in the year, maybe even more of them if we were to start talking about each one of them individually, which I don't want to do, but, not that I don't mind, but. So the 9.3 million really isn't the actual number that we should be voting on tonight, because there is a lot of wiggle room to be able to move stuff down the road and revisit it after other things transpire throughout the course of the year. And so I'm wondering if we come to a quicker number, or if we should lay this over or send it to committee? Because I think the 9.3 million, I think the 9.3 million isn't what we really need to vote on tonight with the discussion we've had. If you want to touch on it, Mr. Demus, what?
Certainly, the city council can take no action. They can take some action. You can amend the project. Certainly, anything, Mr. Souza provided you with items that he felt wouldn't be a detriment or a cost to the city. That would certainly be what my concern would be, is if we were going to be incurring costs. That's not the case here. So if you wanted to slow down, it wouldn't have necessarily a detrimental impact on what we were doing. Again, when I just referred to a few minutes ago that we tried to bond once a year, it's most favorable for us to bond in the February, March timeframe. So even if you were to delay action on some of these issues for another couple of months, it wouldn't even have an issue, it wouldn't have an impact on us issuing long-term debt and bonds related to this.
So I would make a motion that would, that we could amend this item to five, roughly $5 million. I think that is about.
Councilman, the guests are still here, and we have other speakers. Please make your motion after we excuse, because we're thanked. Okay. Councilman DeFlorio.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If we approve this, the 9.3 million dollars and change, this allows you to go out to bond this amount of money. If we don't use all this money, it's almost going out to get a loan for $9 million, correct? If you don't use all the money, can you give it back, or can you refer it to, can you use it for the next? This was on our CIP, CIP, when we had the budget hearings, okay? This was all the, so I don't have a problem approving any of this. What I'm saying is, like the good counselor brought up, Suites Circle, the design. If we don't need that 100,000, okay, what would you do with that 100,000? Could you pay off the bond? Or could you transfer it to the next projects?
Well, the city would actually have two options. First, I'm not in favor of issuing debt until we've actually are into the project and we know what our costs are actually going to be. We have the bids. We know what's going on. So I'm not in the habit of actually bonding projects until we are concrete in moving forward. Now, let's say that that project, that process has happened, and at the end of the day, the city was able, the city bonded 1.1 million, but we actually had savings of 100,000, then what I would do is, under master general law, I would bring those unspent bond proceeds to city council, and you guys would actually have to authorize the use for another project. That other project, though, would have to be very similar to the original authorization, because you would have to tie it into useful life and terms of the agreement. So if you had $100,000 that was unspent on Appleton Street Park, and you wanted to actually use it for Florence Phase Two, you could do that, because the two items would be similar in nature. The other thing that we have is, they're actually, and I'm actually in the process of doing this, there are a number of bond authorizations that the city has on their books. They're called authorized but unissued that I'm going to be cleaning up and bringing to city council to take formal votes to rescind or to reauthorize for another purpose. Some of the amounts are very small. I know one of them I had just looked at was $633, something to that effect. I don't actually bring before council, but we do have a couple projects that had been approved in the past, and for one reason or another, that project didn't move forward. So we still have some of those authorizations sitting on the books, and in the case where we don't actually issue the debt, I'd be coming to city council and ask for city council to rescind those votes.
I have no problem voting with this. After all, we've done all the parks in the city of Everett, and it's not fair to the people that live in this area now, telling them we don't want to do your parks. So most of this is, most of the money is going towards the parks, the construction of the parks. And Everett Square Improvement, that we know we need it. So everything here is needed, and it's not going to affect this year's budget. Is that correct? Did I hear that correct? It's not, because we always said that we didn't have enough money. This was going to be a tough year. From my understanding, this is not going to affect this year's budget.
If projects proceeded quick, you're correct. So if projects proceeded quick enough underneath these terms, and we did move forward to bond these projects, the earliest we could bond them would be this next upcoming spring, which would be February, March, maybe into April. This year, we actually bonded in April, but typically, you're looking at bonding in February and March. Those payments, those debt service payments, wouldn't come due until fiscal '20. So it wouldn't have an impact on your fiscal '19 budget.
That's what I'm saying, because we have such a tough year. It wouldn't have an impact, and in 2020, we will have more money coming in, and we should be in a safer place. So my thing is, I will say favorable action on this.
Second.
Still have, Councilor Marchesi, you're next.
You know, something, I'll yield to favorable action, because I'm looking at the stuff here, and, you know, I think there's a lot of it as well needed. I mean, there's a lot of money going out here, but it seems like we're going to have a little bit of a windfall next year. And I'm not really worried about going out to bond. If they have to go out to bond, they're doing a good job. That's their job. Let's move it along.
Fable action. We have a second call for the question. I'm just repeating what everybody's saying.
All right, thank you. First of all, I want to get some, I want to get some, just get some clarification. Councilman DeFlorio, I apologize. You had the floor. While you had the floor, you made the motion. It was seconded, even though I didn't acknowledge it, but you had the floor, and as a result, you have the right to make that motion. I apologize, Councilman McLaughlin, because I also, you had made a motion, and I asked you to hold off on it. Councilor Marchesi called for the question, so that ends all, and it's been seconded. So if we will excuse the customary thanks, we'll vote on the motion. Okay?
On the motion, this is the call for the question?
This is the call for the question. First of all, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay, the ayes have it. So now, the motion is for favorable action.
Fable action.
On the motion? On the motion, Councilor Capone.
Thank you, Mr. President. So I know, I know that the members are willing to vote for this right now. I know they said it was part of the CIP, which it was, but we have to understand that when we do our budgetary process, CIP comes around like, eh, don't worry about it. You don't have to look at that. We don't have to vote on it yet. It's going to come back to you, and you can look at it then, and that's when you can ask your questions. But now it comes up here, and it flies across the table. So this is the time to ask the questions if we're not going to spend the time, and the budgetary time, to talk about capital improvement. So I don't question Mr. Demus's bonding practices. He's very good at his job, and I know his practice is sound. One of the questions I did have for him for the second round was I was going to ask him about the timing of our bonding request, because we do, as a community, try to do that once a year, because I am sensitive to the fact that when we go out to bond, it does cause issues. He answered that in his response, and that's February and March. So the body can do what they want. We've got the motion in front of us. My personal opinion is if we're not going out to bond until February or March anyway, I think it would be in our best interest as a community to take a look at this $9.4 million, see exactly what we're doing, even though it's not coming up in this year, well, it could technically come up in this year if things move faster, if it's unlikely. It's more likely it'll be during next year and going forward. But I personally would like to find out a little bit more information about the extent of each of the projects, and I'd also like to see if there's anything that we could stagger to the year beyond that. So I would.
Do you want the motion to send this to committee?
I would like to send this to Ways and Means.
That's where we should have been to begin with.
Okay, so the motion to go to committee supersedes the first motion. So right now, we have a motion before this to send this to Ways and Means. All in favor? Opposed? Opposed?
Aye.
Okay, I like, I'm in doubt, okay, because not everybody's, everybody's expressing their vote. If you're in favor of sending this to Ways and Means, please raise your hand.
Aye.
If you're opposed, the ayes have it. So. That was the last piece? Motion to adjourn.
If we could, Mr. President, because it is a regular meeting, we would be remiss if we did not ask for a moment of silence for Mary Barker, who was involved with this community for many years. She was involved with the library as one of the trustees. Wonderful woman. If we could please have a moment of silence for her.
Absolutely.
I'd appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. President. I ask a move for adjournment. By motion for adjournment, it's been seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. You have adjourned.